Hi, everyone.
Hello, Dr. Bryson.
Hello, Mr. Fenely. How are you?
Congratulations.
Thank you so much. It's been a whirlwind.
I can only imagine.
My gosh, I feel like I was hit by a Mack truck or something. Like, I guess I'm so exhausted and I'll wake up and feel like a new person, but I think it'll take a couple of days.
I will say that I don't have a doctorate, nor do I have any interest in obtaining one, but I feel like the Mack truck thing might be preferable in that case. So, kudos to you.
Did you defend your dissertation?
I did successfully yesterday.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. It is good. We waiting? We waiting for? Glenn?
No, there's Glenn.
Okay. Joe will not be with us tonight. Waiting for MJ. And Steve. There's MJ.
There's MJ.
Hi, MJ.
Hi, Stephen. I was having, I pulled an MJ the last minute and I erased the link. And so I had to go into Zoom and plug in the meeting number and stuff, having difficulties.
Something.
Congratulations, Dr. Bryson.
Thank you so much. So crazy.
So proud of you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Steve says his internet is running slowly. He's going to reboot. If not, we can start without him and he'll jump on shortly. So I see WCTV is here. Does that mean we are running, we are streaming right now?
Perhaps.
Would assume so.
Yes.
I think, yeah, I just got a text that our sound actually is not good. So I don't know what that means exactly. Can you hear me? Okay, everybody?
I can hear you.
Yes.
Hopefully that will get figured out. Have my community friends letting me know how it's going on their end. All right, well, it is 7:02. We will just wait another minute and see if Steve can log in.
Jen?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm trying to get into my packet and I now I know I, oh, there you are. Okay. I can't review the packet while I have you guys up on my screen because of how I logged in, so.
You can't, you can't log in? You can't start a new window?
I tried to, I was, the thing is, is I can't click on the link when it's in the agenda in that document form for some reason. So I have to copy and paste it into the, a new screen. I accidentally hit the wrong button and erased it, so.
MJ, when you're in that document, you have to open it with Google Docs and then click on the link?
Well, I did.
Okay.
But it, and it's blue. It's a hyperlink, but it doesn't do anything.
Okay.
And I haven't been very, I haven't been very successful in clicking on it when it's, when I have, when I open up the document, you know, it comes up as a blue hyperlink, but it doesn't, it doesn't do anything. So I end up having to copy and paste it.
Okay. I'm not sure why that's happening.
I was okay. I was, I was able to link on it, but click on it, but maybe we can troubleshoot later. All right, it is 7:03, so we should probably get started. It is, we are still waiting for Steve to join and Mrs. Newhouse will not be with us tonight. Everyone else is in attendance, Mrs. Dixie. So, good evening and welcome to the December 16, 2020 School Committee Meeting. Before we get started, on behalf of the School Committee, we are deeply saddened to inform our community of the recent passing of Mrs. Anne Marie Norman, a longtime staff member at Wilmington High School. Our hearts and thoughts are with her family, friends, colleagues, and students. Dr. Brand has just a few words to share about Mrs. Anne Marie Norman.
Thank you, Dr. Bryson. It is indeed the case that we lost a member of our Wilmington staff sadly yesterday from the high school, as mentioned, Mrs. Anne Marie Norman. She was a longstanding staff member in Wilmington, was hired as a special education teacher at Wilmington Middle School, as I understand it, back in 2008, and transitions to her role at the high school before taking on the position as a life skills teacher. She had many years of experience in education prior to her tenure with Wilmington, and we certainly extend our heartfelt condolences to her students that she served in Wilmington, their families, and of course, their colleagues and her family at this very difficult time.
Following our Pledge of Allegiance, please join us in a moment of silence in memory of Anne Marie Norman. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. On our agenda next, we have public comment. I believe we have one in-person comment, although I don't, don't see him, Mrs. Dixie.
We have two, Mark Galucci and his, Mrs. Lori Galucci. So I'll let Mark into the room for his comment.
Mr. Galucci, you are here with us. You can unmute. And you have three minutes to make your public comment. Thank you for joining us tonight.
All right, thank you. Mark Galucci, 60, Agostino Drive. So I just wanted to thank everybody for the time tonight. I'll try to keep it as brief as I can here. I'm here to talk about the middlesex ruling of open spectators. I know you guys have heard a lot about this issue at this point. And I just really wanted to speak to some clarity around some of the misconceptions out there. So the first one that I feel like is that a lot of people think that this is about the parents. And I'd like to clarify that it's important for the parents to see their kids play, but it's equally, almost even more important for the kids to have their parents there. Especially these senior children, it's their last time playing in a competitive event. It's their last time for their parents who have been there for them are going to have that opportunity. It's really, I mean, sports are about family. From the minute that they laced up their skates the first time, they picked up a basketball, they kicked a soccer ball for the first time. They, the parents were there, their families were there, and it's coming to an end. And for these seniors, this is it for them. This is going to be the end of the line. It's a lot, and they really want their mom and dads to be there with them. They'd love for all their friends to be there too, but they understand that that's not going to happen. So, I mean, they've had so many of these memories taken away from them right now. And it would just be a shame to have one more taken away. This would give them the opportunity to really get a little normality back in their lives. So that's the one of the misconceptions. I really wanted to clear that up and let you know that it's about the children for first and foremost. The second one is that I think people think that the parents are asking for, again, as I talked about a little bit before, everybody to be there, and that couldn't be further from the truth. What we're looking for is nothing more than the EA guidelines state, and the EA guidelines are stating 40% capacity with the new guidelines. Most of these facilities are holding 1,000 people or more. We're talking about with coaches, players, staff members at these facilities, and the spectators, which will be the parents, we're only talking about 12% capacity. It's less than a third of what we're talking about, the guidelines being. So we're not, we're asking for a heck of a lot less. You know, we all understand that there's this virus out there. Nobody wants to put themselves at risk, their children at risk, or anybody else at risk. That's not what this is about. We just, we drive around, we see people in Market Basket, we see people at Target going Christmas shopping. Why are they able to do that? Well, they're able to do that because they're following guidelines. They wear a mask, they're social distancing as much as possible, probably less in most places than what we're talking about. So if people can follow guidelines and that's considered safe, why is this not safe? That's the big question, and that's what we're trying to get to the bottom of here. And, you know, we just want the, what's fair is fair. We're being told, follow the science, everything's okay. So we're more than following the science, you know. If people are going to go Christmas shopping, we should be able to go see our kids play, and they should have us there. And I'm going to put this out there, talking to all the parent groups out there. Myself, my wife, all the parents I've been talking to, we're willing to volunteer at these games to make sure protocols are followed. We don't see it being an issue because we know what's at stake here, and how important it is. And to not follow the protocols puts, puts it all in jeopardy. So we never do that, but we'll do this. Contact tracing, making sure people wear masks, social distancing, policing ourselves, but we'll all volunteer to make sure that happens. And lastly, it would be awesome if Dr. Brand, Ms. Muzio, would be just willing to have a quick discussion with a few key parents. Not talking about a crowd and a gang or anything like that, just a few people, just have a back and forth discussion. And that way, we can come up with some solutions, make sure that it's going to be safe for everybody, and everybody gets what they want. Safety, the parents, the kids, everybody can get what they want. So that's what I came here to say, and I'm hoping that gets listened to. I know this isn't about a back and forth tonight. You can't give me an answer, but I would love to hear from Dr. Brand and Ms. Muzio and maybe see if we can start that dialogue before it's too late.
Thank you so much, Mr. Blue. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chair Bryson, our, our next speaker is Lori Galucci, and Ms. Savage was the third person. She emailed me to let me know she would not be able to participate. You're welcome. Can you hear me?
Yes, please state your name and your address for the record, and you have three minutes to make your public comment. Thank you for being here with us tonight.
All right, thank you. Lori Galucci, 60, Agostino Drive. I know my husband just spoke, and my, my take, I guess, is a little bit different, a little bit more personal than him. So just bear with me. I'm not very good at public speaking, but I wanted to start off by saying thank you to all of you for letting me speak tonight, and I understand the difficult times that we're in and appreciate everyone's hard work during this. I just wanted to comment on the no spectator rules at the winter sports for the upcoming season. I would like to start by saying that my father, my uncles, myself, my siblings, my cousins, and now my children have all been student athletes at Wilmington High School over the last 50 years. I can't imagine my grandparents, my parents, my aunts, uncles ever saying that they were not able to go watch their respective children play a sport and not having the chance to share memories with them. These memories and stories come up all the time at family gatherings. I was lucky enough back in the 90s to be part of a back-to-back state championship team for the Wilmington High School, and one of those years, I was also able to have my sister be on the team with me. Our whole extended family shared in this experience, and it's something that we will never forget. I can't imagine my parents not being there to watch us and cheer us on. And as a parent, you're there to support your children through all chapters of life. Sports is another important chapter. What is being asked is not anything that's not being allowed in the state right now. I understand the stands can't be packed, and although the kids would love to be playing to a crowd, they understand that as well. Spectators are not what is asking for. We are asking for family members, our own household, to be able to attend, to cheer our children on and continue to support them. The state guidelines currently allow two spectators and siblings at the games with masks, social distancing from others. This is just all that we are asking for, nothing more, just to follow the guidelines. As a nurse, I completely understand that the numbers are increasing, and it's possible that more will shut down. And there's also a possibility that sports will not be played. If that happens, so be it. But if children are given the okay to play, there is no good reason that the parents cannot attend these events. We all go to grocery stores, Christmas shopping, restaurants. Why can't we go to the rink? I understand that during these COVID times, some will say that it's selfish to want to be there. I happily disagree. I have three children at Wilmington High School, two of which are seniors. My twin sons are on the hockey team, and their senior year has absolutely sucked. They have lost so many memories, and they're not going to play hockey again in college. This is my last opportunity to watch my sons play, play a sport that I've been watching since they were three, and supporting them the whole way. Everyone has been telling me over the last 10 years or so, enjoy it now because soon it's gone and you're going to miss it. Well, you know what? They're right, and I am going to miss it, and I don't want this last opportunity taken away from me. So yes, if you want to say I'm selfish, so be it. I just want the same chants at family gatherings to talk about these memories with my children as my parents have with me. We have all loved this last year. Please don't take away more. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Galucci. All right, Mrs. Dixie, there is nobody else in the waiting room that said they were coming, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. All right, item four, we have approval of items by consensus. We have first, approval of minutes, December 2, 2020. Is there a motion? Mrs. Burns, thank you, seconded by Mr. Samaha. All in favor? That is, Mr. Fenely, oh.
I should abstain, and I wasn't here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You have an acceptance of a donation to Wilmington Public Schools from the International Family Church in the amount of $40,000. Thank you very, very much, International Family Church. Is there a motion? Anybody? Mr. Bjork, thank you, seconded by Mr. Ragsdale. All in favor? That is unanimous.
And thank you very, very much for that generous donation.
Okay. Approval of the disposal of old athletic uniforms. Not as exciting as our last one. Is there a motion? Mr. Fenely, seconded by Mr. Bjork. All in favor? That is unanimous. Then we have warrants G. 414, 415, 416, R213, R214, L38, 39, 40, 41, FS20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, and 27. Is there a motion? Mr. Samaha, thank you, seconded by Mr. Ragsdale. All in favor? That is unanimous. Another warrant, CBO2. Is there a motion? Mr. Fenely, seconded by Mr. Samaha. All in favor? Two abstentions, Mr. Bjork and Mrs. Burns. Is that correct? Okay, it's a little slow, so sometimes people say, I can't quite tell right away, so I don't want to make any assumptions. We have a payroll ending 12/9/2020. Is there a motion? Mrs. Burns, seconded by Mr. Bjork. All in favor? That is unanimous. And finally, sped 09, 10, and 11. Is there a motion? Mr. Fenely, seconded by Mr. Samaha. All in favor? Okay, that is four in favor and two abstentions. Mrs. Dixie, do you see that?
Yes, thank you.
Perfect. Thank you so much. All right, item five, superintendent's report. Dr. Brand?
Thank you. And good evening, everyone. Just getting word, sorry, Mr. Lord is just texting me about that the feed from WCTV is frozen.
I've gotten a couple that the sound is not good. I don't know if there's something we can do on our end, or if it is.
I gotta be honest with you, I've been experiencing a little bit more internet instability from my home. I know I get it at periods, but I'm getting more than usual.
All right, well, we'll wait for Dr. Brand to give us any notes from Mr. Lord if something comes in.
Yeah, if, sorry, if we could, we'll just pause. Yeah, he's, he's actually texting me back as we speak.
Okay.
Yeah, it does seem indeed that the audio is poor. That's what WCTV is reporting.
Does it seem poor to anyone on the, on the Zoom call? Because everything sounds fine to me.
Sounds fine here. Is there something we can do, Dr. Brand, headphones? I mean, is there a comment?
I, I would, just as I'm thinking about this, obviously, the will of the chair and the committee, I think that it would be reasonable to continue with the meeting. We've provided access for public comment. This will be a recorded meeting. I'm assuming that that recording is still working from WCTV, and obviously, we have Ms. Dixie taking notes, so I think would be my recommendation to continue at this point, but I'll stay in touch with Mr. Lord just to see if anything changes, or maybe Mr. Rosario, if you could, in the background.
Yep, I can, I can get in contact with Ken. Yep.
Yeah, Mrs. Burns?
Could I ask, with this format in which we're in, I know Zoom has the capabilities of recording, would that be of any benefit that we could upload it?
I am recording the meeting, so.
Okay, so we have a backup then.
So we do, we do. Mr. Lord actually is indicating that they're not sure if they can fix it. But that's a great point, MJ, that you raised about the recording, so I think that we're in, I think that we're in a safe place in terms of appropriately capturing this, the, the meeting and the discussions here, if you're comfortable continuing. Obviously, we're we'll try and fix this, but.
I have a question. I know that we are, we're required to present, to perform our meeting in public, and if we are not able to be live, is there, is there a possibility of problem with open meeting law?
It's an interesting question. I'm not gonna, my pause, I think that with the recording, we're, we've provided the public access, so that has been a checkmark, if you will. We're recording this meeting, so that will capture this for future review on demand. So it's my belief that we are appropriately complying, but I'm not going to suggest that I found myself in this kind of situation before, to be honest.
We, can we actually, can we just take a, can we take a quick break for about two minutes? Maybe turn our videos off, mute ourselves, keep the meeting running, but can I just, that way I can quickly connect with, with Glenn. Is that okay? Okay.
Sure.
Yes. Can you hear me?
I can hear you, Paul.
Okay, I'm, I'm checking with, I'm testing with WCTV.
Okay.
Uh, we've received word from Mr. Lord, who's been in touch with WCTV, that they have rectified the situation, so we should be good to proceed.
Excellent.
Exactly with how we are.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Let's just wait for everyone to get back.
He can't do it.
All right, Mr. Bjork, Miss Waiting for Mr. Ragsdale. Mrs. Newhouse is here. Okay, we're all back. Sorry about that, everybody. It looks like we are, we are good to go, so we will proceed, and I think, Dr. Brand, it was, it was your turn, so it's, you're, you're on.
So, let's, let's try again. As ironic as this is, you'd think that we would have had this many months ago, but anyway, thanks, everyone, for bearing with us. There are a number of items in the superintendent's report this evening, and if, there are a couple of additional and important items that I do want to provide an update to the committee on. So if I may, I'll, I'll go through very quickly the items that are listed here, and then this new house, as you can see, is with us here to provide us with an update as it relates to the, the town as a whole. So in the school committee packet, you'll note there are items for, actually, all items A through E, very quickly, as these are all really informational. Item five, A, the Massachusetts School Wellness Coaching Program. You will find a memo from Ms. Brown McGrann that provides a nice overview of a great opportunity that the district is, is very fortunate to be able to participate in. We were selected to participate in the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's program, School Wellness Coaching. And in short, what this, what this program will do is provide assistance and support to our district specifically around our School Wellness Advisory Council. We had an initial meeting with the contact person from DESI, of which I participated in, I believe it was about two weeks ago now, and just a, an exciting opportunity to provide some foundational support for our school wellness advisory program. They will help in facilitating meetings, they'll help provide guidance and technical assistance. So we, I just wanted to bring this to your attention, and, and know that throughout this, our thoughts are shifting to such things as the School Wellness Advisory Program, and a council to, to move forward with. Item five, B, inclement weather, snow day information, obviously, rather timely, as it were. You'll, you'll note in the packet that this is the informational item that was recently shared with the community as a whole. Largely, it remains the same as that of last year and previous years in terms of the decision-making and, and what will take place if we find ourselves in need of altering our operations for inclement weather, and the one obvious caveat this year slightly different is the ability that you, as a committee, have afforded me, in my role as superintendent, to designate an inclement weather day as an instructional day. We, we did share this information with the community as a whole, and we, we made it available on our website, and so I just draw attention to this. And as it were, we find ourselves on the eve of, obviously, our first major winter storm of the season, and based upon, based upon all of the weather models that we view, that go quite a bit deeper than the information that sometimes is shared on the media sources, this storm is locked in, and certainly, there's every reason to believe that the projections will unfold in terms of some significant accumulation, and so being of the, the belief that our families and our staff appreciate knowing the call on whether or not we will or won't have school in advance, I did decide to make that call earlier today, and that notification has gone out to everyone in advance of tomorrow's storm. Item five, C, sorry, was there, was there a question? Did I miss? No. Five, C, updated information on quarantine information, return to work guidance, again, for your information, but in the packet, it highlights some of the recent information that has come out in terms of adjustments to the quarantine guidelines as issued by the Department of Public Health, and also included in that is more particulars around the return to work guidance. We are, as a district, obligated to follow the guidelines from the Department of Public Health at the state level. Some have reached out recently and, and asked whether or not, as a district, or in fact, you as a school committee might have the authority to develop guidelines that would differ from that of the Department of Public Health, and in short, the answer is that that, that that's not something that would be within your purview. I have reached out to legal counsel on this to seek, to seek his opinion, and in short, really, the strong recommendation is, is that we, as a district, should be following the guidelines established by the Department of Public Health in this kind of matter, so. I did wanna, wanna share that information with you. Let me pause there, and I know I'm going somewhat quickly, any questions on, on that or the previous couple of items? Okay, thank you. Item five, D, is the Middlesex League Athletics Press Release, as we obviously heard some continual concern within the public comments earlier tonight. This is a copy of the press release that was, was sent out very recently to all of the Middlesex League schools. Again, just to, to reiterate, the, the very close collaboration, both with our athletic directors in the league, as well as the superintendent of schools. There is, um, within the press release, obviously, some particulars as it relates to approaching the start of the winter season. I will take the opportunity to note that there is brief mention of the spectators and our current approach that obviously has, has become quite clear that, to start the season at this juncture, the, the intention is to begin competitions without spectators, but we've also made the commitment to come back together and review that and further discuss that, so I think it would be an important opportunity just to stress that this decision at this point in time is not for the entire season, but at least initially, but we have made that commitment to come back together and discuss that further. So I thought that I would make special mention of that. Again, for people who are interested in the community, an exact copy of that press release is included in the packet. And finally, I'm five, E, Safe and Supportive Schools, a DESI grant. I, I wanted to share this also with you in terms of some of the information as it relates to the grant and, that we've worked on behind the scenes to further expand our, our preparedness within, within the district. So those are the items that are included within the packet tonight. There are two additional, if, if there are no other, if there are no questions, rather, to move on. The, the, the two involve an update on where we're at as a community related to COVID. And in, as it relates to the positivity rate and a number of other, a number of the factors that are evolving before us. I, as you know, have regular, pretty much daily communication with Ms. Newhouse, the Wilmington Board of Health Director, as well as Ms. Crowe. And it is, it has become quite clear that they have growing concerns in terms of where we are as a community on a number of levels. Our positivity rate, as I understand, is, is one of the, if not the highest, in terms of the communities that we are connected to right now. The positive cases are rising, so too are the quarantine levels that we're also facing, both with staff as well as with students, and that's also rapidly expanding. And, and collectively, suffice it to say that there is growing concern that this new house has, that Ms. Crowe has, and that I have, in terms of where we find ourselves as a, not only as a community as a whole, but also, of course, as a school community, and what this means for our operations. After further conversation, multiple conversations in the last 24, 36 hours, I, I do want to share with you that Ms. Newhouse and Ms. Crowe have recommended that, where we, with where we find ourselves, that we, we temporarily alter course in terms of shifting to a remote learning model to get us through until the holiday break. It's obviously just a few days away, but we are, in some respects, growing concerned with our staffing levels because of staff shifting into quarantine, being positive contacts, or in, in, I think, a few cases, very few, some that may be positive, but collectively, the landscape is, is very challenging right now. And so they, they have, they have made that recommendation to me. We've talked at quite some length today. And, and with that as a backdrop, I'll ask Shelley to, to provide some additional context from her perspective.
Sure.
And as I mentioned, she's here tonight. Thanks, Shelley.
I, I can't, I don't care, I don't know if you guys care to see me, but I can't get in on video, because it says the host has to let me in, so I didn't know. Or I can just talk.
Um, why don't you just wait one second?
Okay, got it. Okay. Here we are.
There you are. Nice, Shelley.
Hi. Um, this was, this was a tough decision to think about, but I, um, just seeing the data and, and the surge that we're in after Thanksgiving in, in Wilmington as a community as a whole, we're at 7.6% positivity rate, and the new positivity rate will come out sometime, usually comes out tonight, but I think with the storm, it might be put off a little bit till tomorrow, till, or, or maybe the early, early Friday, but I expect us to still be that high, because, I mean, I'm getting cases, you know, dozens of cases every single day, or up to, I last, I checked late this afternoon, about 200 positives with well over 6, 700 in quarantine, and I just got a couple dings on my phone, which means a few more cases come in, so. They're coming in fast and furious. It's, I don't want to say it's hard to keep up with contact tracing, but it's, it's manageable, but we're on the brink of not being able to manage it due to the lag time in cases being reported to us as positive, and that has to do with labs. That's of no fault to anyone, even laboratory's fault, it's just that there's so many tests being conducted that it's hard for everyone to keep up in their respective positions. So I just don't want to see anything, anything happen to our, in our school community or our community as a whole, if we miss something because of that, and when we had such a bad, I don't even want to say bad, I'm not really sure how to put it, but such a, a large surge in, in cases revolving around Thanksgiving, I think we're gonna see the same thing with Christmas next week and then through vacation. So if we can try to keep that at bay for a little bit and keep our schools, staff, and students in the community safe, then I think we should, you know, that's why I recommended this, and I also think it's just a reminder to people that household spread is really where I'm seeing the rise in our cases. It's not from going to a restaurant, it's not from, you know, things like that, it's not going to the gym, it's people that, they're just going to work, they're picking it up, and then, or they don't know where they picked it up, but then they bring it back home, and, and whole families are being affected. Large families, they all have to quarantine, some of them have to isolate. We're seeing issues with food insecurity in town, and, and with Christmas coming, people are, their mental health, so it's just, I think we're at, like, almost at the breaking point. I'm hoping that things will start to get better now that we see the vaccine is on the horizon. So, so due to all that, I think, you know, in talking with Glenn and Doreen today, it's just the decision that I think it was time that we made. So I don't know, any of you guys have any questions about anything? Feel free to go ahead.
Thank you very much, Shelley, for the update. Are there questions from the committee? Mrs. Burns?
Forgive me, have we clarified, it feels, it sounds like there's an elephant in the room, so I wasn't sure if we clarified with how this discussion is being brought forth, or why this discussion is being brought forth.
So.
Dr. Brand?
Sure, so, yes, to be, to be clear, based upon the recommendations of Ms. Newhouse and Ms. Crowe, and talking further about the current, the current landscape right now, that, that, that she has described, I finalized a decision to shift the district to remote instruction, affect what would be effective on Friday. This decision will shift us to remote for, for what will be three instructional days, three days that otherwise would have been in person, Friday, December the 18th, Monday, December the 21st, and Tuesday, December the 22nd. As you know, with our current schedules, Wednesday already is a, is a fully remote day for students. So tomorrow, being a snow day, cancellation of school is obviously not a part of this, a part of this trajectory of where we're going. So the, the intent, just to be also clear, is to reopen schools on Monday, January the 4th, for in-person learning, and to continue our hybrid unless something obviously should transpire at the state level or something of different concern with, at the local level. So this is not intended to be the start of a, as some districts might, you might be hearing about our doing a two-week closure. We, we believe, and in my opinion, we are taking advantage of the timing of the holiday to move to remote now, based upon the concerns that, that Shelley and Doreen have identified, and that that coupled with the holiday period that's upon us takes us through the equivalent effectively of a, of about a two-week quarantine. And it's our hope that our, our, our situation as a whole will improve, positivity rate will get under control, and that we can return to full in-person learning on January the 4th. I'll, if I may, two things that I just think for everyone is important to keep in mind. Number one, obviously, there has been so much focus on the red metric or the red coding system, and some have still questioned whether or not being in the red for one, two, or three consecutive weeks immediately leads to a decision to shift learning models. To my knowledge, unless there's something that has been just introduced, there is no specific guideline or expectation at the state level by either the Department of Education or the Department of Public Health that automatically says that a community in the red for three weeks must shift to remote instruction. That's number one. Number two, as some people might be wondering about the fact that we continuously talk about the fact that we have school, in-school spread, that's true. And based upon the analysis of the cases that we do have, that, that there is absolutely zero belief that we have in school spread right now. However, what also must get, be kept in mind is that we have staff who are being placed into quarantine, not because of situations specifically in Wilmington Public Schools, but because of their home environment, their life environment outside of school. So, so there's a lot of things that are, are obviously swirling around that make collectively this a, a, a situation that was felt to be important in terms of a decision to make. MJ, did you have, I'm sorry, did you have another question, though?
I did. Um, just, I do want to interrupt your thought, because I think you raised two very important pieces that are extremely helpful information. So forgive me if I interrupted that train of thought, but my, my next question is, is with regards to the, and I say this cautiously, with regards to the upcoming holiday, and you know, I know a lot of what we're seeing now is, huge part of it has to do with Thanksgiving.
At what point, Dr. Brand, would you, you know, right now, our thought is to start hybrid as of January 4th, but taking into light Christmas and then New Year's, at what point would you potentially reconsider that and get, you know, if you had to hypothetically get information out to parents? Only because, I mean, I know, and I just say this carefully, Mass General, I know, we've got a lot of healthcare providers who are taking the one last go of seeing their families before we get into the thick of things. MGH, as you know, has been, I think, widely reported, all major Boston hospitals, our emergency room is currently under disaster plan mode, which means that if anybody needs emergency services, they should try to disperse it to other community hospitals because we have no beds. So, you know, taking those things into consideration and what we've seen after Thanksgiving, what's the likelihood, or at what point hypothetically, I'm not going to tie you into a specific date, and that's not my intent, but at what time, if you had to switch, alter plans, would you look at the data to make that decision, I guess? I guess this could be a combined question for you and Miss Newhouse.
I mean, we look at, we're doing, looking at the data every day, all day long. So that's what kind of spikes it, and, you know, we're looking at trends. It's done, you know, data is looked at seven days a week, so.
I guess my question, forgive me for interrupting, Miss Newhouse. My question is, you know, for the January 4th start, you know, we're hoping to get back into hybrid, and that would be my, that would be awesome. But taking into consideration what we're seeing after Thanksgiving, at what point, if you're looking at those, you know, metrics, at what point, as we're near the start of school, would this conversation or this be revisited to make sure that hybrid would be a safe modality, starting back after the holidays, as opposed to going two weeks, you know what I mean? I'm not sure if I'm being clear, as opposed to going two weeks remote and then starting back in hybrid? I mean, I want kids in school, like, you know, like nobody's business, but, you know.
Well, yeah. I think, what the first comes to mind, the first comes to mind is the status of our staff, right? And so even though we are going into the holidays, we, again, hopefully collectively, and that's everyone, everyone is going to be on board to do their part and to follow the precautions and safety protocols that obviously we are being strongly urged to do. And so, idealistically, that would put us in a place that we could come back with a complete clean slate of staff that are not in quarantine or not themselves with a positive case. And the same would hold true for the vast majority of our students, hopefully all of our students. Certainly, if there were developments that placed us in a situation in which we had a critical mass of staff that were in quarantine and they could not return on January 4th, that would be an issue that we would have to look at. And maybe that's not the entire district, but maybe it's building by building, right? As I've mentioned before, I'm not sure what the student situation might look like to press or push one way or the other, to be honest. I'm not exactly sure, but, you know, certainly the staff, the staffing metrics would be a very important factor. Hope that helps.
It does. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, MJ. I have a couple of questions, but I'll wait till the end. Are there other questions from the committee? David?
It sounds as though we're talking about the entire district going remote, but I want to clarify that would high-needs students also be remote for these three days? The five-day week and four-day week in-person students?
Yeah, thank you. So the decision right now, as opposed to the approach that we've taken, as you'll recall, earlier in the school year, right at the beginning of the year, in which we were fully remote for most everyone, and certainly for the high school program during the, the high school programs during the closure for the high school, you will recall that we have all of the high-needs programs operating for almost 100% of that time period. Based upon where we are right now and the larger view of the concerns as a whole, the decision would be to have those programs shift also to fully remote for, again, what would be the last, the last four days of school, Friday of this week, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday.
Okay. And one other thing that I want to bring up is that at our last meeting, two weeks ago, when things weren't quite where they are now, but they were still in not a great place with lots of cases, we discussed the number of students and staff in quarantine. But we also, at the last meeting, went through the CDC update on school operations, which had, you know, lots of statements about schools being one of the safest places young people can be, and not one of the, that doesn't represent where there are challenges controlling the spread of the virus. And we're, it's two, it's two weeks later, the situation has changed. But I want to, I want to make sure that people who were watching that meeting and taking that as a commitment to keep students in schools as much as possible, especially when we didn't have school spread, you know, feel confident that we still have that commitment and understand why we're making this change here. And I don't want, I don't want there to be a sense of, you know, oh, well, didn't two weeks ago, we just say the opposite of the steps that we're now proposing to take here?
Right. If I may, I'm not sure, as much as it can be sort of a direct response to that question, but I appreciate your raising that. And that, again, this is, I guess I would say that based upon these concerns as a whole, it's an opportunity, I believe, to seize the immediate time period that we have, the partial week next week, to still obviously capitalize on these days as instructional days, but to try and, I'm not sure how best to describe it, but to calm things down, effectively try and institute our own quarantine, if you will, of staff and students, to be honest. And let there be no question that this should not reflect a change in course, in my belief as a superintendent, of what is best for our students, and that is to continue in-person learning. It is my understanding that there might be a lot of chatter out there within the community around beliefs that there's pressure to go one direction or another with this kind of decision or what might be best. Let me be clear, this decision does not reflect a change in course. My decision or my commitment from the beginning has been to have students in person as much as possible. That does not waver here. This is a temporary, I would use the term temporary adjustment, but not meant to be a long-term change of course. And we will hope that these few days, coupled with the holiday, will allow us to truly reset and to begin back on January 4th, as we have been quite successfully for the past couple of months.
Thank you. And I think the way that I would put it is that it's because we want so much to be able to come back and continue our hybrid model in January that we want to make this, you know, temporary several-day sacrifice of the in-person learning model in order to set us up for a successful return to in-person learning in January.
Can I, I'm just going to jump in. Mrs. Newhouse, what, so here we have the community before us. What needs to happen to make sure that we benefit from what we're sort of calling this two-week quarantine, right? So we're going to take advantage of this so that we are really prepared to return to in-person learning on January 4th. And what do our families, what do our children need to know about, about the next few weeks to make sure that we reverse what's happening? I mean, I know we've, I know you've probably talked about this till you're blue in the face, but here we are again. And clearly, I guess my first question is, what's happening? Why are we so high as compared to places right next to us? And what do we need to do for the next two weeks to make sure that we can return to our hybrid model in January?
I think that we're higher because of larger, I don't want to say large, but larger household gatherings. We really need to take vacation and use it as a time to just stick around the house and stick to your immediate family. No sleepovers, no hanging out, you know, having three, just three or four friends over because you feel like it's just, just a couple people. And really have to stay within your own family unit. I know it's tough. I know it stinks because it's the holidays and everyone wants to have fun and get together, and it's been lonely. But if we can just do this, I think that, and really do it for not just two weeks, but it really has to be done till we see our numbers start dropping. And, you know, who knows when that will be? But that's what I see, that's where I see the trends anyways. Like I said earlier, it's one person brings it home, and then the whole family gets it. And, or, you know, you go and visit someone, do you think it's okay, but it's not.
Thank you. I mean, I too, like David and some of my colleagues who have mentioned this, we have said repeatedly, school is a safe space, and I believe it is. I think school is probably safer to have our kids in school than wandering through the plaza, oh, you know, doing whatever it is they do after school. So I am a little torn on this. I'm also a little, not a little torn, very torn, but I understand it. And when our director and our director of nursing are saying, this is what needs to happen, well, of course, we take that very seriously. My worry is, again, the sudden shift with people not having time to prepare for that. So I know we have this, this snow day tomorrow, but are our teachers, are they ready to make this shift? They were expecting to be in person on Friday, and the same with students. Now, I know students should be bringing things back and forth. Nothing really should be left at school, so we shouldn't be in a space like we were. But now, if children were in school on Tuesday, that's it. Those Mondays, so whatever they had left to do cannot be done. There's no time to prepare. They had to hand something in, they needed to get something from their, from the music room or whatever. So I guess are we in any position where we're going to have to be opening spaces up for children to prepare for their holiday break? I mean, it's a significant amount of time if they didn't tie up loose ends. So that's for Dr. Brand.
I'll speak to the first, and that is the messaging to staff that, you know, I think has been rather continuous over the last, I don't know, certainly a couple of weeks anyway. I know our principals have had the conversations with staff. And I, in fact, with recent messaging earlier this week, reminded, in part because of the possibility of the storm coming, but also just as a general reminder, and you have seen this with other districts who made the shift. I've heard of these on the evening, and the next day suddenly switched. So we happen to have a day in between. But I have the confidence that staff knew that there was this possibility it would be coming and that they were preparing for it. In addition to that, though, we will certainly, you know, we will make buildings accessible as that might be needed for both staff and if there are certain belongings that a child might need to pick up because it can't be left there long-term over the next couple of days. I know that our building leadership will work to figure out a plan to make that possible. This is, you know, this is just rolling out now. These, as we've talked about, have been discussions and talks developing through the day. There has not been a broader notification to staff yet. This is the, quite frankly, this was an opportune time to have this meeting tonight, but I do have communication that I'm preparing that will roll out to staff as a whole as well as the community tomorrow morning, first thing.
Thank you. Other questions or comments from the committee? Mr. Fenely?
Thank you. Could I just ask quickly, Mrs. Newhouse, you, I hate to put you on the spot, but for folks who might be watching this and didn't happen to catch the selectmen's meeting or might not follow the apple, you mentioned food insecurity, and I had seen, I think it was from your office, folks who were willing or interested in shopping for folks in town that are in quarantine and can't get to the store. I was just wondering if you could talk very briefly about how that program might work and how folks could reach out to you?
Just when we're doing our tracing and talking to families, we always ask them, you know, do you need anything? Do you need any supplies? Because sometimes it's so quickly that they're put into isolation and quarantine that they, they might be like, oh, man, how am I even going to food shop? Or I need prescriptions, or I need errands, or anything. And if they don't have any, you know, immediate family around to help them deliver things, or if they're shy or whatever, I really want to make sure that they get the services and help that they need. So after I announced it, and it was becoming a little much, too much for me as one person to keep on doing, I was, you know, doing it on my own, and more and more were coming in. So, yeah, since Monday night, we already delivered toys and food to six families. And I have another one tonight that we're going to be doing. So really, people have just been emailing me that they want to go food shopping and make a delivery. It's all anonymous. I tell them to just leave it on the front steps. No need to talk to them or anything like that. And it's just, it's kind of like anonymous heroes that are out there helping me. And we have small donations, large donations. So, and I'm just kind of going down the list of emails that I get, and I ask the next person and the next person. And people are more than willing to help and deliver. So it's, and I had someone get a snow shovel for someone for tomorrow. So you wouldn't think that you would need things like that. Or going to CVS and getting, you know, getting an inhaler, getting a prescription, dropping it off for people. Things that, you know, you're kind of like, oh, how am I going to get this stuff if I'm hooped up for 10 days? So anyone, you can email me at the Board of Health and just let me know, and I'll keep you on my list.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay. All right. Well, thank you. So, oh, Mr. Raxdale?
I just want to catch this before, because I think it looks like we're at the, sort of the end of discussing this point. I actually, I have something, I'll just say that I have something I want to go back to on the Middlesex League press release. So whenever, if we want to finish this discussion about the remote transition, we can do that. But I'd like to come back to that before we get to new business.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Newhouse.
Thank you very much, Miss Newhouse. Nice to see you.
Anytime.
All right. So there's one more thing, Dr. Brand, on your report, and then we can go back to that press release.
Sure, certainly. Thank you. So, yes, this is one of the additional items that is very new development and that was not, I was not able to capture under the superintendent's report when we prepared the agenda last week. As some might know, the Massachusetts Board of Education took action earlier this week, yesterday, Tuesday, in fact, at their board meeting to support an amendment to the requirements around structured learning time in the state's public schools. What it does is it adjusts the minimum levels for live instruction and synchronous instruction, as we've obviously been often referring to it as, and that schools operating under the hybrid model as well as and/or the remote model have to provide. So a couple highlights of these amendments include that by January the 19th, 2021, of course, districts and schools operating under a hybrid learning model have to provide at least 35 hours of live instruction, and that's over a 10-day time period. Students also have to have an opportunity to interact each day with teachers. And those two facets, those two adjustments have to come into place, as I said, by the latter part of January. There are, as I understand it, approximately a third of the school districts throughout the Commonwealth who, as of right now, based upon the schedules that were submitted to the Department of Education and ultimately approved by the Department of Education, are under those 35 hours. Wilmington, I must share, is one of those districts. We are short of that 35 hours of live or synchronous instruction. And so in context, there are round numbers. I generally think of it as approximately 350 school districts throughout the Commonwealth. Uh, and so in context, there are round numbers. Um, I generally think of it as approximately 350 school districts throughout the Commonwealth. So we're talking about a large number here. Um, this is um, obviously very, very new development. Um, and I and I would just take this opportunity, I know our committee knows this, but to remind our community that that our reopening plan was uh, inclusive of student to teacher schedules that we submitted to the Department of Education uh, and that which were approved. And so this is an adjustment uh, of the expectations, um, obviously midstream. Um, as superintendent of schools, obviously, I have an obligation to you as a committee in our community to make sure that we are aligned with the requirements of the Board of Education. And so this necessitates that we revisit our schedules um, quickly. Um, obviously, at this juncture, it will be the very first part of the new year. My my intention and my thoughts around doing so would be to form uh, probably three small working groups. Uh, the three being at the elementary, middle and high school level. Um, and and my thoughts would be to include some administrative representatives, uh, some staff, uh, staff representation um, as well as a thought that I had is perhaps to have uh, a school committee member that would be a part of those working groups. Um, this would be a part of a uh, opening up of the negotiations as it relates to the schedules. Uh, the schedules were very much a part of our memorandum of agreement with the Wilmington Teachers Association. And so like will be the case for all of our other counterpart districts who are in the same place, uh, it would certainly require uh, some adjustments to the negotiated plan. Um, so I I wanted to share this with you again, that this is structured learning time and uh, this has become a very uh, a very hot button topic across the state uh, with my colleagues and I think many uh, right now, but uh, it's it's obviously an obligation now that uh, we have to comply with and uh, we'll certainly intend to do so. Let me pause there and I'm happy to take any questions if folks have any.
Thank you. Questions? Comments? Mr. Smaha?
Hi, yeah, I I know that um, the uh, the the hours, you mentioned the hybrid hours changing, but the full remote hours are changing um, as well. And I know that's going to impact especially um, at the high school uh, level. Um, so I didn't know if any of the um, uh, because I know Ms. Peters had had mentioned at the last meeting changing the schedules. If any of those schedule scenarios um, would um, get us to any of those required hours or is that sort of having to rework those as well?
That's a great question. I mean, I'll start with, you know, Ms. Elliott has also been in touch. So if you have anything Christine want to add, but I you know, um, thank you for bringing that up. Um, once this became clear that uh, this was going to uh, become a an issue uh, before the Board of Ed, I did ask Ms. Peters to just hold tight. Uh, we needed to see um, where this might go. Um, I I I can tell you that uh, Ms. Peters did not finalize with her her team or her staff any specific revision to schedules. Um, I don't know, Christine, if you know better, whether or not any of the scenarios that they were playing with will will align with these requirements. Do you know by chance?
Uh, I'm not sure yet because when we um, asked them to hold, we were waiting for the the state had given us an indication that they would be changing their requirements, but they hadn't indicated the number of hours. So we um, just put a pause at looking at all of the plans and um, we'll certainly revisit it in a more uh, global perspective with these groups.
Okay. Mrs. Burns?
Thank you. I um, I just wanted to share though, share um, that that very much in support of um, as untimely as it is, and I think this would have been best served probably over the summer. Um, I I am in full support of uh, what Desi has um, brought forth. Um, I think and I've heard a lot and there's research and reports every day on on the news about how the mental health of these of children are being hugely impacted and um, some of which even those kids who do have some access to in-school learning, it's it's certainly not enough. And as we've discussed previously, that schools are a lot of our students' safe haven. Um, I think it's it's more um, instrumental. Um, again, I think the timeliness and then the ramifications um, of these changing, of these changes with regards to impact bargaining and such is um, is 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 difficult, um, especially to ask, you know, in during as we approach break and the first couple of weeks to adjust all these things, but um, I do see it as being necessary. Um, and I know that um, you you'll take it with vigor to ensure our students are um, having as much collaborative time with both staff and peers. Um, I know it's it's a it's a huge chunk after go after a very strenuous and um, work-filled summer um, to have to undertake mid-year and um, I am, I I do appreciate your diligence and um, the formulation of plans to try to get this work going so that we can meet that January 19th deadline. So um, I and that's just basically what I am, wanted to comment to.
Thank you, Mrs. Burns. Other comments or questions? I have a couple, but I'll wait till the end. Mr. Raxdale?
Uh, I just think very quickly that that it could be said that the manner in which the board went about adopting these regulations, the short timeframe, uh, and even some of the stated rationales and support for it um, were perhaps not well done. Um, I don't want to I don't want to get into a a large thing about it because in the end, it, you know, the the regulations passed, we have to work with it and uh, you know, complaining about, uh, you know, initiatives and regulations coming from the Board of Desi is uh, ultimately not, not something that's a very productive use of our time. Uh, but there's a lot of work that's going to have to be done with this in a time when we're, the districts are shutting down for two weeks. And then essentially two weeks after they come back are supposed to be implementing these uh, new schedules, uh, which schedules in the first place took all summer to create and negotiate. And so I think that this is, uh, you know, putting putting us in a tough position is not necessarily appreciated, even if uh, some of the motivation behind it is laudable. Uh, and uh, it's going to, you know, be a lot of work for our district staff and uh, for our administration.
I'll um, I'll second that. I guess I would, so I have a couple of thoughts here. One, I think the three small working groups is fine as long as it can move very, very quickly. I think having a couple of school committee members who can participate is is very helpful because we do know that if everyone is in the know, it just makes it so much easier to to move things along. I would also hope that there would be a WTA rep on each of those small working groups. Is that, was that your intention? Okay.
It was, uh, stat spice that I meant by staff slash WTA representation.
Yeah. No, I think ultimately, you know, I think when we start to do, and I you know, would say that I did work closely on those negotiations this summer and we always prioritized student learning and student and staff safety and and I think that the work was was good and it was thoughtful, but it is time, it does take quite a bit of time to do it that way. And this, I can't even imagine doing that level of work in such a short amount of time. And so just the idea that we're even not going to start this until the beginning of January is a little bit, gives me heart palpitations. So I wonder if there's some way to sort of get a jumpstart and say, okay, this is what we need to, these are some of the ideas. I think getting input from teachers to hear. I'm sure, I mean, we have brilliance in this district for them to say, oh, I already had some ideas about how to increase my live and here's what I was thinking. I mean, I just feel like we need to to move very, very quickly and be incredibly efficient, as David remarked. Otherwise, there's just no way we're going to be able to really implement that. I mean, I know we have to send it in by then, but there's no way we're going to implement it until, I'm not even sure when. So then it becomes sort of we're doing so much work and then watching it take very long time to actually move into action.
If I may, and perhaps I wasn't clear in my comments, I I did mean to suggest that we um, totally would just let this sit idle until we came back in January 4th. What I, what I do envision reasonably before the holiday break and recognizing that people need a bit of a bit of a break is to to get these working groups assembled uh, to be able to clarify sort of what the charge is and what the parameters of work needs to unfold. And so even if there's not necessarily a lot of active work that takes place, um, depending on people's schedules over the holiday break, certainly the readiness to dig right in and begin and and uh, you know, as soon as possible will will transpire. And and I, well, well, there is certainly some work to be done for sure. Uh, I am hopeful that the approach of taking three smaller groups that can really focus on that particular level um, as opposed to everything combined might might be uh, might be more helpful. And we're not building everything totally from scratch necessarily. Our hope is that we can uh, make some shifts and some adjustments that uh, may get us to where we need to be.
Mr. Smaha?
Hi, yeah, um, uh, something that Dr. Bryson um, just made me think about was, is this, is the January 19th deadline, is that um, uh, like a plan has to be submitted to Desi by that time or is that it has to be implemented like in action by the 19th?
Um, I don't, Ms. Elliott, do you know? I I must admit, I I don't exactly know. There's not been um, i- if there has been some recent releases, um, I I haven't myself even had a chance to take a look at them from Desi. Christine?
I believe they're they're noting the 19th, but I am not sure that it has, I think it's been somewhat vague. Um, they have basically stated that, you know, the expectation is that districts will um, have the plan up to date and and be following the guidance, but they haven't really specified um, a a method of submitting a new plan or whether or not they expect it to be um, in action on the 19th. So I'm sure we will be hearing more. Um, and I can do some further investigation as well about that.
Thank you, Ms. Elliott. Mrs. Burns?
Um, on that note, um, I don't know if everyone, anyone's been on the the listserv. Uh, but um, there is a group who posts um, highlights of the new any new um, regulations and changes um, from Desi and, you know, through these regulations. And this was, this just came out today. And if I could just read a passage that might help clarify, um, the new requirements become effective on January 19th, 2021. They will be in effect for up to three months while the board accepts public comment. So there is a public commenting period um, starting with regards to this. Um, and then it goes on to say, a school district may seek a waiver of these regulations upon written request to the Commissioner of elementary and secondary uh, education. So I hope that's what I know this firm has disseminated to school committee members. Um, I, you know, M A C, the M A S C membership, I should say. Um, so I don't know if that is at all helpful.
Thank you, MJ. Mr. Raxdale?
Uh, I was also going to just talk for a moment about the um, the waiver that was mentioned. And the the intention, the the memo that was shared with the board yesterday said that the um, that the regulations would be brought back to them for final adoption at their February meeting. Uh, so the after, after the period of public comment. I don't see any particular reason why uh, they didn't explain what reasons might prompt a waiver. I don't think there's uh, there's really much chance that we would get a waiver from the regulations themselves. Uh, but there might be a possibility of having the timeline for implementation modified through the waiver process. And so I I wonder if that's something that might be worth exploring uh, with the Commissioner's Office um, about if that might be one type of waiver that might be granted, not, you know, not a full-on waiver from the requirement, uh, but from date of implementation.
Thank you, Mr. Raxdale. You know, and I know, and I've mentioned this before in these meetings and to Glenn, but to really to think carefully and intentionally about what teaching and learning looks like and sounds like and just having students log into Zoom does not mean that they're necessarily meeting the standards. So I think through this work, to be really careful and intentional about what would that look like? How do, how do I know that I'm really making an impact on their learning? Is there another way to think about this? Could I do a small group? Would that count as ours? How would that count as ours? So I hope that we're, you know, thinking a little bit more kind of what what might work other than just what it is we're doing right now that would also fulfill this obligation, but more importantly, rather than trying to to meet Desi happy, like, how are we making sure our students are learning? I mean, that's what's most important to me, whether they say it's this amount, I don't think a certain amount of hours tells us that, but sure, I mean, having more live time definitely makes sense. And and I would agree that that's, oh, having kids in school more would make a whole lot of sense if they're in the hybrid model, of course. So I just want to make sure we're not just trying to check off the lit, you know, check off these boxes and say, oh, good, we've got it. But to really think what's going to be best for the students in front of us? What's going to be best for the Wilmington children as we also try to make sure we're meeting these regulations? So just my two cents, you know, I could go on about that all day, but Christine's nodding along with me. I know she she knows, we've had these conversations, so. I just, um, it's important to remember what's what's most important when we're thinking about teaching and learning. Mr. Raxdale?
And just to follow up on that, I I think that that's part of why the timeline, timeframe is so problematic and, you know, so important to think about because uh, you know, to to try and do that deeper thinking and uh, to think of this not just a point of ticking boxes uh, but about how do we maintain or improve the level of education is, you know, it's just not something that, you know, that happens in a day. And the the shorter a time period that we have, that we have to make the change, uh, you know, the less the less deep and sophisticated whatever we come up with will be.
I agree. So I guess I challenge us to just to not push back on the regulation. I mean, we have to, we have to do, but to push back and to say, wait a minute, is this, are we being led by what we know about teaching and learning or are we being led because someone handed us a number? I mean, I know we have the people in this district to make the decision based on what we know about good, good teaching and learning. So I hope that we have enough time um, to get there, but I think that all in all, I think the three small working groups makes a lot of sense. I think it's better than having one large group where everyone really has different things they're dealing with at each level. So and the sooner we can get that started, the better. Are there any other questions or comments about this? And I'm way off my timestamps. Just saying. Okay. All right. Well, I'm sure there's more to come. Um, and we will provide an update definitely at our next meeting, if not, if Dr. Brand doesn't provide something sooner. All right. I actually have no idea where we are right now. Okay, wait, no, I do. So David, you wanted to go back to the athletics press release?
Yeah, so I just wanted to follow up on the uh, the section. Um, so Dr. Brand, you you discussed that you mentioned that there's going to be essentially, you know, a follow-up meeting, and that's what the memo says as well, that uh, that there will be a time to reconsider the position on spectators. And I wanted to know whether there has been any discussion yet about what criteria might be considered at that time. So what would the league, what would the athletic directors and your fellow superintendents, what would you be looking at to determine whether a change was warranted? Um, not necessarily going to an exact metric, uh, but what kind of framework, you know, is, has the framework been thought about or discussed at all uh, in order to help make that decision?
I would say, uh, I would, not to my knowledge, has there been a, to to use your term?
Oh, you're muted.
Sorry about that.
Okay.
Uh, can you hear me now? Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I I would say that there hasn't been a specific framework uh, established and and I would say that um, in large part, that's simply because it was, quite frankly enough, to sort of come to terms with the plan to launch the season um, and and the particulars for uh, for what is ahead for for athletics. I would say, though, this. Now, what's what's pretty clear is, you know, you've got a collection of communities here that um, behind the superintendents and athletic department, athletic directors, I'm sorry, also have respective Board of Healths. And um, it is important to note, and one can probably assume that not necessarily everyone sees these uh, particular issues and matters exactly the same way. And uh, so the reality here that is, seems clear to me, uh, is that that also has to be reconciled as we revisit this conversation and And determine how it is that we're going to proceed. You know, that that is to say that there could be a community A and B that the board of health. And the superintendents and the athletic directors are on the same page in terms of readiness for whatever that might look like. But community C could have a very different point of view. And I have firm reason to believe, in fact, I know that there. There very well could be some communities who might find themselves in a different page. And may simply refuse to send a team to participate in another community if that community is not going to. Follow the same guidelines, rules, or take approach. So we've not got to that level of discussion, just want to be clear. But I do want to point out that there are additional and important factors to consider as these discussions are made. You do have the board of health that obviously has a very central role in in moderating all of all of this. So that's going to clearly have to be brought into the mix as we as we return to this in the future.
Thank you. Mr. Raxdale, is there anything else on this?
No, I think that I think mentioning the the board of health angle is an important, an important part of the part of the puzzle as well. But I think that that. I think that that makes it more important to at least be thinking about. What are the criteria or just, you know, even just on a basic level, you know, for what reasons might the policy change? Because if there is nothing, if no one even has an idea in mind of, well, what might we see? Like if we were going to make a change to this policy, what reasons could that be for? What would we be looking at and what would convince us that it's all right to allow a small number of spectators? Because if you're not thinking about even in principle, what could lead to that? To the, to, you know, to a change or reconsideration, then it sort of seems like it's just, well, maybe this will get them off our backs. If we just say, well, we're going to reconsider it a little bit later. And and I think that to have a good faith effort of, no, we really, we would like for this to happen. If it can be done safely, then what are we, what are we actually going to be looking at to try and make that determination?
Yeah, and I'll just say last thing, and I know we probably want to move on, but the last thing is certainly the starting point in large part will undoubtedly be. Consideration of the learning model that another district is in. The guidance, I believe, I don't think has shifted that if you're in a fully remote model. That has implications for athletics. Similarly, the question to resolve around the color coded metric system. I can't say with certainty, but I'm going to guess that there may be some, again, coming back to the board of health. That may have concerns with two, two red communities coming together with spectators to compete. I'm not sure, but I would, I would, I would probably guess that that could be a criteria. So there's two elements as a very starting point to consider. As as that conversations we've visited, but I certainly understand your point.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. We are going to move on. There is no old business, so we're going to move right into new business. It feels like we've been talking about new business all night, actually. Now, there's really new, new business. This is the new, new business section. Item A is the Wilmington Teachers Association Contract Negotiation Subcommittee. We are entering, we are going to enter into negotiations this year and we do need a subcommittee of the school committee to participate in that. And Dr. Brand, is there anything else you want to say before we ask for volunteers?
No, I think you've covered it. Thanks.
Okay, so we are looking for at least. One to two members to serve on the negotiation team for the WTA contract. Mrs. Burns, Mr. Raxdale. Are there any, is there anybody else? Okay, there's no vote here. Is there a vote? There's no vote here. No, no vote. Okay, all right, I'm comfortable with that. I think that's, that's, that's a great representation of the school committee. Anybody else want to? Okay, all right, it's official. You officially volunteered. Thank you. We appreciate it. All right, item B, we have update on MCAS and access testing schedules and that is Ms. Elliott.
Evening. In your packets tonight, there is a memo regarding updates from Commissioner O'Reilly, who on December 7th sent out information. Updating districts about MCAS and access testing. Just a few highlights from that memo. The students in grade 11, our current class of 2022, will no longer participate in testing during the January, February window for this. School year. Testing for this class in ELA and mathematics is being postponed until later in the spring. No specific date. As of yet for that. However, students in grade 12, the class of 2021, as well as adult test takers will remain eligible to. Participate in one or both of those tests beginning in January if needed to earn their competency determination. And that window of testing will be available for those students who are eligible. From January 14th through February 12th. And in addition to that, our. Testing for the access testing for our English learners. They are extending the window of time that we can administer that test. We have between January 7th and May 20th, so it's a nice long window of time. We are hoping to delay that closer to the spring to allow our students as much time as possible. With our curriculum before administering those assessments. And the only other update right now is around the high school science and technology engineering assessment. And so the department recently determined that the June 2021 Biology and Introductory Physics Test will be. The legacy paper-based tests with, that will be assessing overlapping standards from both 2006 and 2016 frameworks. And the administration of the next generation tests in those subjects will be delayed until June of 2022. At the bottom of your memo, you will see a link to the most up to date testing schedule. That has been released by the Department of Education as well for your reference.
Thank you very much. Other questions or comments for Mrs. Elliott? All right, thank you for that update. Item C, we have the SCAM Collaborative and NRT Memorandum of Agreement, Mr. Gergio.
Thank you. In your packet was an agreement that the SCAM board directors had. Approved with North Reading Transportation Force SCAM Special Ed Transportation, about 11 districts involved. As part of this, they wanted the school committee, school committee of each of those 11 districts to approve this memorandum of agreement. Just for transportation services for this school year. So we just need a vote.
Okay. All right, so we need a motion and a second and then a vote. Is there a motion? Mr. Samaha.
I move we accept this memorandum of agreement between the SCAM Collaborative and NRT Bus Incorporated.
Thank you. Is there a second? Mr. Bjork, is there any discussion? Mrs. Burns.
Paul, would you be just, if you could kindly just highlight what the, this MOA stipulates and how it's different from? The contract. That the collaborative entered into at the beginning of the pandemic and. How, how, I'm just trying to, if you can just do the highlights, you don't have to get so involved, but if you can, like, just an overview of how this impacts the. Previous one that we signed in order. You know, prior to a usual, pre-pandemic, early pandemic and now. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so I think, and I didn't point out, but Murphy, Hesse, Toomey, Lehane. Andy Watt, the law firm has been involved in both the SCAM, this, this particular MOA, as well as our MOA for the yellow buses. But essentially here, the charges for the first. Instead of 180 days, 110 days that were professional development, that's at 50% versus the normal contractual rate. Remote days at 78% of the contractual rate. And then full in-person days are days that the vehicles are used is at 100%. In this particular agreement too, there's discussion about if North Reading Transportation should get any more CARES Act. Funds, they revisit this agreement. Not much different than what we had last year, other than we didn't have the 50% piece, if you will. It was basically 78%. And, you know, a lot of that is, you need to understand, is to keep these people employed. And available when we need them. So. You know, I think both this and and ours is. A good, a good agreements with North Reading Transportation.
Very good. Thank you so much. And can I just, to piggyback on that, does this run through the summer of 2021?
This one here, the SCAM, I believe expires at the end of the calendar year. And I think they may have to revisit it because I think there's a piece in there about. Again, CARES Act, if any more funding comes to North Reading Transportation for the rest of the, you know. If the CARES Act gets extended or there's new funding available, this gets.
Right.
Re-looked at, if you will. So I think it expires December 31st on the scene.
Thank you very much, Paul.
Any other questions? Okay, there's a motion and a second, all in favor of approving this MOA. That is unanimous. Thank you. All right, there's another one.
Yeah, the second one, MOA is Wilmington Public Schools with North Reading Transportation. Very similar to the agreement that SCAM has. Oz does go through the rest of this school year. There is criteria in here, again, if if North Reading should receive new loans, new funds and stuff, we can revisit it and. Change the rates, but again, it's 50% for the first few days, the first 10 days essentially, 78%. On the remote days and 100% for the buses that actually run. We've had a little difference this year for in our contract as we have kindergarten five days a week. So we have, you know, additional runs because they're half day. So we have, you know, a run in the middle of the day, which we typically didn't have when in full day, so. They've been great, North Reading, this is working all well. There is some savings to the district, which is good and they've been available whenever we need them. And Lisa, our transportation coordinator, has been doing a great job working with them. So again, Andy vetted this as well with us and this is similar to what most other districts that. Contract with North Reading Transportation have agreed to as well.
Thank you, and we need a vote on this as well.
Yes, please.
Okay, is there a motion? Mrs. Burns?
We're moved.
Is there a second? Mr. Samaha, any more discussion? Okay, all in favor of approving this MOA. That's also unanimous. Thank you, everybody. Thanks so much, Paul.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, so it is about a quarter to nine and it's okay with Dr. Brand and the committee. Might suggest moving the policies unless it's something that we actually very much need to look at right now. Maybe moving it either to the end of the meeting after the budget presentation, just because I want everyone to be somewhat fresh for that. And if it does become too late, then can we move that to our our January meeting? Is that okay?
If I'm, it would be absolutely fine to shift the policies if you would like to the next meeting.
All right, is that, is that all right with everybody? Yep, okay, all right, great. Okay, so seeing no objection there, we will move that to the next meeting unless we really finish the. Budget presentation quickly and then and then we'll, we'll add them on if it's still early enough in the evening. All right, so we will shift that and so item F is the superintendent's preliminary FY 2020. 2022 budget presentation. I still find that to be so funny. Dr. Brand.
Okay, thank you so much. Ms. Dixie is going to share the presentation. This is just really putting into presentation format the information that was included in the budget binder. We will, as always, make sure that this presentation is also available to our community online as well too. But as hard as it is to sort of wrap around, not only that it's FY 22 we're talking about, but of course that we're at this point in time in which we have to. Deliver to you a budget plan. And so this is exactly in sync with what the norm is for. For the dates, the preliminary budget is is shared with the school committee traditionally in December, just prior to the holiday. And then we are on course for the delivery of the recommended budget, which will come. A little bit over a month from now in January. And despite the tumultuous times that we're in, this is certainly reflective of the normal pathway that we're on. Next slide, 60. I'm not advancing them because sometimes I find my computer freezes, so hopefully Miss Dixie will have more luck. So just in context, the overview, it certainly, what is suffice to say is that the, the current time periods. Time period, rather, has certainly impacted in a general sense our budget building. And what I mean by that is that typically we would start a school year and. And shortly after school settles, Paul puts together the respective budget requests. They are sent to all, sometimes they refer to as cost center managers or those that are responsible for a budget. And we start very early on in the school year, starting to gather a sense of priorities and needs and such from. Those that are charged with the responsibility of overseeing the important pieces of our budget. This particular school year, understandably, as I'm sure you can appreciate, did not allow for that same approach. Just keeping pace with all of the work and all of the, all of the planning associated with our operations. Simply did not create the the opportunity to engage in budget building as it typically does. And as, as I believe, as it typically should. But nevertheless, we have the obligation to deliver you and then in turn you to. Help support the advancement of a budget to the town manager and we have to do that in order to position ourselves to obviously operate next year. So the real, the context for what budget managers were asked to submit in terms of their respective budget requests included. Identification of fixed costs and obligations and such, whatever legal mandates that we have to comply with. Most of those fall, of course, under Student Support Services, the broad umbrella that that department and the, the department represents. We will continue to provide where we can special education programming in district. Of course, part of the, and I'll talk a little bit more about this a little bit later in the presentation, is a careful analysis of enrollment. And where it is that we see ourselves going next year, we build, of course, total classes or sections and we obviously teach around that information. And other necessary staffing to help support our pre K to 12 overall operations. And so this is the, this is the highlights of that planning to date at this point in time, what follows. And and certainly, one of the things that's not lost upon myself or members of our team is that. At some point, we have to get back to a degree of normalcy and with that, we will also be planning. For the development of a plan that really represents what we think are critical areas to help advance the district forward. But to be quite honest, with the exception of the identification or the conclusion, I'm sorry, in this budget plan of. Again, some, some monies towards supportive strategic planning efforts and initiatives. This budget plan is really maintaining what we have in place going forward to the 2021, 22 school year. Miss Dixie? Next slide. So the budget in context around priorities, some of these I've touched upon, but. Obviously, it's going to be essential as part of this plan to ensure that our programs and services cover what they need to for the students of our district. As I mentioned a moment ago, we very much, it's not immediately right now, but our hope as we, my hope as we hit the new year is that we are going to. Certainly be able to continue to develop plans to support the many important initiatives that were part of our strategic plan. We will obviously look to support our students in district with the right level of services that they that they need. And that's part of an extensive planning process. And we obviously have ongoing commitments and even more so, of course, in terms of attending to the social emotional well being of our. to the social, emotional well-being of our students and curriculum instruction, obviously. The core of our work, teaching and learning, is centered to, central to what we're, we are planning for as we move, move this budget plan forward. Next slide, Tristan. There are some essential assumptions that are not in any way different from the past and how we would approach budget planning. We start very much with enrollment and a projected enrollment right now of 3,133 students pre-K to 12. There's some accompanying information that goes a little bit deeper in that that I'll get to in just a moment. We anticipate holding what I believe is steady, reflective of the current number of out-of-district students that we have right now at 65. We very much are banking on consistency, if you will, in grants and state-funded contributions to help support our budget. As members of the committee know, we certainly, in addition to the budget that is secured from the town, our budget, like all districts, relies upon grant and other contributing funding sources to help provide support for our programs and services and personnel as well, too. We are, we are anticipating that there's a level fundedness, if you will, to, to those, to those, those funding streams. We are, as I mentioned earlier, going to certainly make sure that we shape our programs in line with what we need to legally. We certainly will also be consider, considering the guidelines that we have from a staffing standpoint in the collective bargaining agreement, and we'll continue to plan for transportation, bus transportation for students in district, again, consistent with, with how we've done in the past, and that's with the absence of user fees. And, and so those are, I think, are important assumptions, as I tend to term them, that are important to highlight. The context of this budget, next slide, Tristan, thank you so much. Comparison as a snapshot, right, and consistent with this overall preliminary view, this is intended to be sort of the 20,000-foot view, if you will, the balcony view of taking a look at where we're at right now. This slide shows the figures comparatively between fiscal year 21, which is this budget that we're, of course, in, a comparison to fiscal year 22, which is the preliminary budget, and then the respective changes for salaries, non-salary items, and then the total as a whole. And so that's a, that's an overview of the comparison. Next slide, please, Tristan, thank you. Just to go a little bit deeper on the 22, fiscal year 22 personnel, so this budget plan right now supports just under 500 full-time equivalent, or that's FTE staff, just for members of the community, so as not to try and be too confusing here, the full-time equivalent, we have certainly a larger percentage of our staff that are full-time staff members. We also have a complement of staff members who are part-time. And so when we piece together, let's say, for example, 2.5 FTEs, we consider that 1.0 a whole FTE. That in comparison is slightly lower than the current budget year of fiscal year 21, and you can see the number there, 489.60 FTEs. So it is important to point out with that planning and those numbers that this budget plan, as it sits before you right now, does not include any new positions. That was certainly very different coming into this fiscal year. You recall that we added with your support and your approval a handful of different positions to try and further expand our services. This budget plan does not include any new positions. And, and it really, I think this third bullet is just important to note, and I would want our community to know, and that is that the absence of new positions really is, is in light of the consideration for knowing that the town as a whole is, is like all towns, going to be facing some very significant financial challenges with the result of the pandemic. But what I would want to stress is that the fact that there are not new positions that have been identified here doesn't suggest or shouldn't suggest or convey that, I don't believe, or members of my team don't believe, that there's areas where we could further improve our service delivery through the addition of personnel. But I just don't think that the time is now to do that for fiscal year 22. And, and we'll certainly return to this and that thought a year from now, when hopefully, but hopefully, we're back to some degree of normalcy. Tristan, next slide, please.
Glenn, I think that there's a little lag in what slides, I think, what we're seeing. So.
Overview of fiscal year 22 personnel.
This, right now, I think there's a little, there's a lag in our computer, but this is the correct slide now. I think before that, we were looking like a slide behind, if you will.
Yeah, I think there's a lag. I have to keep restarting it from the slide that you're talking about, so I might just have to keep doing that as we go through.
All right, sorry. I'll try and stay in sync here. So you're on the, the one here. This, this provides just a snapshot of the changes in the fiscal year 21 budget. Again, that's the budget that we are in now, and some of the moving pieces as it relates to the FTEs and the total positions. And again, as mentioned, the fiscal year 22 budget proposal, 487.9 FTEs. Tristan, could you go to the next slide, enrollment and budget development, please? Thank you. So I do want to take a couple of moments and just talk about enrollment because, as I know members of the committee know, this is a, this is a very important basis upon which the planning for any school budget has to start with, right? How, how many total number of students is, is a district expecting will be in our seats come September, and we have to plan accordingly? There's a, there's really, I think, though, a need to point out a couple of relevant areas that directly relate to the context of enrollment. And let me explain. And the first is, is clearly the impact of the pandemic itself on enrollment. And I absolutely can tell you, based upon both anecdotal information and feedback, as well as some data that has been gathered by some organizations, that what is being seen, what has been seen across the state is an impact in enrollment in an adverse or negative way in two predominant ways. The number of students who have unenrolled from districts and moved to either homeschool programs, as well as the number of students who have unenrolled to pursue private educational settings. Our numbers are up from this time last year in, in a fairly drastic way. But there's, there's really the belief, first off, to know that we are, we are not in a unique place, different from other communities. Again, I think that that's an important piece to stress. But the second is that we cannot predict, or sorry, let me take that back, we cannot believe that those numbers are going to be consistent. That is to say that the spike that we have had in those students pursuing home enrollment instruction should not give us reason to believe that those numbers are going to stay the same for next year. And similarly, while we don't know for certain, we, we're going to assume that the students that we've lost to private school settings, many, maybe not all, but many will return to Wilmington once things stabilize as it relates to the health situation. So that's, I think, a very important piece to point out. Next slide, Tristan. The second contextual factor, if you will, as it relates to considerations of enrollment, is that as a district as a whole, and this is not new to us, you will recall that we've, we commented on this in the last couple of budget cycles, that Wilmington, Wilmington Publics continues to project a decline of enrollment over the next number of years. And, and that's just a fact based upon the data that, that's collected, and Paul really, as you know, does such a great job carefully tracking this. But there is no surprise here that we are on a, on a gentle downward decline, if you take a look at the data as a whole, over the next number of years. That also has to be kept in context around the ratios that we have currently in the collective bargaining agreement for the different grade level bands and how it is that we plan accordingly, and we, we shape our projections and our predictions on, on, on alignment with staffing and those numbers. And then, next slide, Tristan. The last piece that I think is important to just bring attention to, and that's the decline at the secondary level. And that, I've also certainly commented upon this in the past, both last year as well as, as well as more recently with the superintendent goals and the focus on what's happening particularly at the secondary level. And if you take a look at the data for the outlying years, there is a, there is a trend here. And there's, there's a, there's enough data that we have behind us to strongly point to the fact that there's, there's really a high level of confidence in these projections. And you can see at the middle school level, that's the middle column, and then the high school far right-hand column, where, over the next handful of years, the numbers are, are, we anticipate them going to. And so as, in the larger context of enrollment, these things collectively do, do give us pause to think about what lies ahead. But I think of the three, the most important factor is that this is, the times that we're in right now and the students that we have lost, this is a blip. And we, we have to, we have to bank on that the vast majority, hopefully all of the students that we may have lost during this time of the pandemic, will return to Wilmington next year. The consequences of not planning in that way certainly would be, would be extremely problematic for us. Tristan, next slide. So there's a lot of numbers here. This information, again, just to point out for our committee and the community, will, it's included in the larger budget packet, but this gives you a breakdown, a landscape view of the enrollment per, per grade level. The, the three-year cohort survival average, that's a, that's the, I guess you call it the framework or the, the mechanics, if you will, behind the numbers that, that Paul uses, certainly he can speak to more, more detail. Yeah, go ahead, Paul, sure, please.
This slide, it's a little busy, I apologize. But what I tried to do, at, at the top of the, this slide, where you'll see 2020, 21, so when we did our October 1st report, these were the numbers we reported and agreed to with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. If you look over that total, it's 2889. And when we project enrollment, we do a three-year cohort survival rate, so we do the average of the previous three years by retention and so forth. So those are the numbers, you see that 98%, 96% and so forth. And then that's used to project the next fiscal year, so that would be the 21, 22 fiscal year. So that, those are the numbers what we typically do, and we've been doing it for many, many years. But as Glenn alluded to, this year is just so different with the number of homeschool and private school students that, and even talking with, in various meetings with the Department of DSE and so forth, that there's a belief that most of these kids, if not all, are going to come back once we get to some, some points of normalcy. So in the middle of this slide, we just did our best, yes, if you will. And Ms. Dixie back, and we made a few, maybe a month or a month and a half ago, had reached out to see how many private school kids we had and homeschool kids we had versus previous years. So what we did here is we just added back students, if you will, assuming they would, you know, in a normal year, these students would be in our school system as of October 1st of 2020. So you see there, for pre-K and K, we essentially brought them back up to the level the average has been the last few years. So we added 65 pre-K and 50 kindergarten students. And then the homeschool and private school, by grade level, we added back as well. So at the very bottom, you see we adjusted the FY of the 2020, 21. So just for simplicity purposes, if you look at the first, or the column says pre-K, we reported to the DSE 16. We're adding back 65, which is the average of the last few years. So we're saying that really we would have 81 kids in that grade. And we did that all the way across the board. So then we, we calculated the three-year cohort average off of those students and come up with a projected 2021, 22 enrollment. And that's the bottom line you see, and there's a 31, 33 that Glenn had alluded to before. It's the best way, you know, I think we went through about six or seven, if not more, scenarios on how to paint some type of picture, but this is what we landed on. So the bottom on the projection document that's in your package, you'll see for 2021, you would see 3,3167 students for FY 21, and then 22 would be the 31, 33. So that's how we got to that, as our best guesstimate of what it would kind of look like next year. I don't know if that made sense. I know it's kind of confusing, but.
Thanks, Paul. All right. Bear with me, just a couple more slides here, and then certainly we're happy to open up for questions. So could you go to the capital requests, Tristan? Thank you. So consistent with the typical budget plan, we're also thinking about the capital aspect of our operations. And so this before you is the request list that we would intend to submit, actually have put forward to the town. Mostly, as you can see, it's a, it's a list that pertains to technology requests, with the exception of the special education vans, as I think you certainly are well aware, we, we purchased those vans to support the operations of transportation for our, our students who ride the minivans, and so we need a cycle of replacement, and you can see the outlying years for that. So this capital request, consistent with what the norm is, is a five-year view, next year being year one out to 26, fiscal year 26. Sometimes we make adjustments for these, and if we feel, for example, that we can push a project out to an outlying year, we'll do so. You know, the reality is that we are obviously, through Mr. Lord's leadership, thinking about the needs from a technological standpoint of what needs to be replaced or replenished, but we're also trying to be mindful of the total requests that we, we can put forward to the town. Paul, anything to add on the capital piece there?
If I could, yeah. A lot of the numbers from our, and even the projects on this are different, a lot of them are different from what we showed last year in the five-year plan, and a lot of that has to do with Mr. Lord had put together his technology committee and a technology plan. So this now more closely mirrors, or mirrors that plan, if you will. So there were some projects that we took off, some that we added, some that we, but it cost a little bit more, some a little bit less and so forth. So this lines up with the technology plan that Mr. Ward and his committee had, had put together.
And then, fine, next slide. Thank you, Tristan. Two slides left here. So there is also an aspect of non-salary that we obviously are, are factoring into this budget plan, that the vast majority of the financial resources as part of our district and that of all is, it's about people. Of course, we are very much a people business, and so the majority of these, these fiscal resources go towards supporting our people. There's also non-salary aspects, though, that of course are, are part of our budgetary plan. So out of an overall budget of just around $44 million, you can see that just a little bit over $9 million go towards supporting non-salary aspects, everything from legal services to, to electricity, some aspects of maintenance. Obviously, we, we, we very much enjoy the support of the town for a lot of our maintenance aspect, but there's some things we need to contribute to. Professional development, special education tuitions are all a part of the, this budget line collectively for non-salary changes. And this is what we believe right now, at a 0.7% increase, is necessary to support our operations next year. And so lastly, just in terms of where we're at in the process, and this gives you an overview of just that, and again, this is representative of what a typical year would be, and so we're, we're on course tonight with, this presentation is part of the preliminary budget. Paul and I have a meeting later this week with the town manager. Paul and I have a meeting later this week with the town manager to, to discuss the budget request and, and his, his view of, of the budget situation of the town as a whole. As I think you know, January 20th, when we get back in the new year, that's not our first scheduled meeting, but at the January 20th meeting, the superintendent's recommended budget for fiscal year 22, our plan is to deliver that to you. January 25th, shortly thereafter, the town manager's budget presentation. We currently have February 10th scheduled for the budget hearing. This is the formal hearing that we have to, we have to hold in terms of being in compliance with mass general law. And then in March at some point, a date that I don't believe has been determined yet would be the finance committee meeting. And then the spring, the town meeting. So that is an overview. So thanks Tristan for that.
Go ahead. Just one, one thing on this. So just, you know, we're clawing, and I'm sure everyone knows that F Y 22, really don't know what it's going to look like. And by all accounts, it's going to be a pretty tough year. You know, you can imagine, you know, all that the revenue the state is not getting, losing, given the pandemic. You know, even the town, whether it's excise taxes, whether it's meals tax and so forth. So F Y 22 is probably going to be really difficult, tough year. I think the superintendent did a great job in bringing a preliminary budget to that. As realistic as it can be, given those parameters, we do have to meet with the town manager and, and kind of determine what the town can support. But I think the, the budget we have here, we really, really thought through. And I think the superintendent did a great job in keeping the, you know, the, the increases to a manageable level, if you will, essentially a non, non-salary is almost flat. But I think, you know, we just have to realize that F Y 22 is going to be a tough year. I, I just wanted to add that. So thank you.
So with all of that, we'd be very happy to take any questions if members of the committee have.
Thank you, Mrs. Burns.
So I, I recognize and I, I have to commend Dr. Brandon and his team, especially the, the numbers man to his.
Yeah. If, if I might just add, he gave me a lot of credit, but I don't deserve that. That's just my level.
It's an absolute, for a successful budget, it's, it, it really is a strong collaboration. It's not just one or the other. It couldn't be created without a collaborative effort by, actually your team, your whole team. And if anybody knows the ins and outs and ups and downs of our, our budget and cycles, it certainly is Mr. Rogero. But I do have, I'm just slightly concerned because I, I do know, taking into consideration how difficult, especially with state funding. It's being projected. My concern is that while we are in the state, and I think the ramifications of where we are today will certainly impact the needs of our students and our staff in the next fiscal year. I, I just have some reservation and, and, you know, I've got my father's personality. So it's sort of, I'm all about saving costs where we can. But taking into consideration what we've seen thus far, I do know that there are some things you can anticipate, which, which Mr. Rogero is very creative in, in finding the appropriate resources to, to fund the unexpected that needs to happen. But there are some that I would anticipate, which are just fallouts from the pandemic. That I'm just, just concerned maybe a little too low. And I'm just taking one, an example is that the legal services, I know with this pandemic, both district and in the Department of Student Support, there has been such a larger need because of the limitations and the modality of, of where we are, that, you know, that drive, drives up costs that we didn't anticipate. But, you know, getting back to that normalcy that we hope to get back to at some point soon. Between then and now, there is going to be a lot more, I think, we're going to need to utilize them more in order to get to that point and ensuring that our students aren't caught in the middle of the pandemic, the delivery of education and curriculum and supporting them in their diverse learning needs, I guess, for lack of a better term. I only point that one thing out, you know, maintenance and repairs, it's something, sometimes it's unexpected. That's where I'm a little concerned with. And as much as I do greatly appreciate being reserved in that, in this particular area of the budget. I just, I guess, I'm just trying to be cautious too, because there's so many things that you can't anticipate and you can only hope. And you just want to make sure that there's at least enough padding to be able to offer some flexibility, I guess, to those things that couldn't, couldn't be anticipated, which is what we, we see year after year in education. So I just throw that out to you as something just to plant, to seed it and think about. I just don't want to undercut, I understand we have to be mindful, but I also don't want to undercut our needs because it's pandemic, pandemic driven to some extent, if you know what I'm trying to say.
If, if I may, on a couple of the things that you mentioned, M J, the legal services. We did increase legal services 30,000 in this budget. And last year in the F Y 21 budget, currently we had increased it about 15,000. So we're taking into account of that, you know, some of that. Now hopefully we don't have to use all of that next year because that'll be 22. But we want to throw a little bit, some more funds in there. You'll see, one of the things, we have a circuit breaker offset amount in the budget, which is kind of a negative. And one of the changes of non-salary is I reduced that offset by $135,000. Assuming that, you know, the, the circuit breaker reimbursement may not be the 75% that we, you know, have been getting the last few years. So I, I've taken that and made an assumption that we may not get the same funding from the state, the circuit breakers we had in pass. So we, we built some of those in, and then other things that, you know, could happen. It's tough to project exactly. I mean, we work closely with, you know, student support services as far as the special ed tuitions. There are potentials in there. We do that every year. So we haven't not put some potentials in that you just don't know. You know, Alice has an idea maybe, but we're not 100% sure. So we'll add those to the, to the budget, just, just in case, if you will. So, and I, and I think in, in, you know, we talked maintenance a little bit. In last year's budget, we had, just as an example, we had $25,000 to redo some of the auditorium she has at the middle school. What we're doing, we did them this year, but we'll be doing them this year. So we don't need that money next year. So that's something we took out. So that, you know, that, that's a budget to budget kind of a savings, if you will. So there's no need to keep that in. So that, that's kind of what we're, you know, things like that.
I appreciate that additional clarification. I just want to, this has just been such a path of surprises and such. I just wanted to make sure that modestly, we just protect ourselves for those unanticipated. And I shouldn't be surprised that you already have a battle plan already worked out. So thank you very much, Paul. And.
Thank you, M J. Other questions, comments from the committee? Mr. Raxdale.
So when we go into this budget process each year, the preliminary budget is always a little higher than what we end up with. So we, the first budget we see in December might be in a typical year, you know, looking, projecting like a four and a quarter percent increase. And by the time we've gone through the process with the town manager and the finance committee, we end up with, you know, 3.75 or maybe, maybe 4%. So is that, do we think that that will be different this year because of just the different budgeting environment that we're in? That this is more likely to be kind of where we end up with, what, where we end up? And if not, where do we see trimming the budget if we have to move from 2.75% where we are now down to say 2.5%?
Yeah, that, so I think part of the, you know, our meeting with the town manager on, on, on Friday, you know, there's partly some negotiation and the town's always been great to the schools and they understand in the majority of our budget's labor. So there's some difficult decisions that would have to be made. We're hoping that we would be right around there. If we have to go from 2.75 to 2.5, as an example, this year is that we can look at and kind of fine tune. If we have to go a lot lower than that, that ends up being somewhat problematic just because it, it, you know, you see the budget, it's all salary and it's, so it's a little bit more difficult to do. But we tried and this, and we always try to be realistic and we really know that in the past, you're right, we've been, you know, anywhere between five to six and we end up with three and a half to four, four and a quarter, whatever. So, but we, we were, you know, in, in this budget, understanding where the state is and where the community is, we think we can work with the town and, and get something that is completely workable and doable from the school perspective. So, and, and again, as I said, the, the town has always been great to the schools from a support standpoint.
But, but I will just point out, if I may, that, you know, whatever term you want to use, that bare bones, essential services, unlike last year where the budget plan before you did include the recommendation of some additional positions. As I said at the outset, that this budget does not. And so depending on the adjustments that we might be forced to make, and, and again, clinging very much to that enrollment piece that I think is an important part of the story. Because if, if we were to base enrollment projection, I'm sorry. If we were to base our staffing on our current enrollment and did not take into account any of the students who have left coming back, we will, and they all were to come back, we would be in a very difficult place. So it's going to be difficult. I mean lately, Paul has done a great job helping shepherd this budget before you. And, you know, he's, and I appreciate the comments. It's collectively, obviously a team process, but he's masterful at being able to take a, a realistic view at these numbers. But there, there's not a lot in this budget. I can say that we're going to be able to just eliminate and not impact our services. And I do think that's an important piece to point out.
And I, I agree that the enrollment issue, I mean, we need to be, we certainly can't base it on, on this year's enrollment and, and assume that those students aren't going to be coming back. Presumably, most of them will be coming back. Not all of them will, but you, it would be, I think, irresponsible to assume less than a very high percentage of students returning when, when we get into a more normal situation.
Thank you. Other questions or comments from the committee? Paul or, or Glenn, can you point me? I know we talked about there being money for the strategic plan. Can you show me exactly where that is? Strategic plan initiatives, where would I find that?
I believe that is in the curriculum line on the central office.
Okay.
There was, there was money in there last year and we just kind of replicated it. When I say last year, I mean F Y 21, which is this year.
Yeah.
Right, right, right.
And it, and, and it is, I would, would deter or identify it as a placeholder. That is to say that there's not a specific identification of, of initiatives that tie out to that amount. But that's also, by the way, the approach that we did take last year with your, with it, with your support, you know, realizing that there's still some time that needs to pass to, to establish those initiatives or priorities that financially might need some assistance. So that's the hope, again, as part of this plan that you'll be willing to, to support.
Thank you. Any other preliminary questions? So we let it all sink in.
And, and it's okay if there's not. Again, you know, looking ahead to the next opportunity for us to talk about this and, and perhaps questions emerge then. We can also provide, as we did last time, at the times before, a little bit of a deeper dive in terms of some of these areas to provide a little bit more context for you. And so obviously just pointing out the obvious, that you'll have more opportunity to, to ask questions and to help better understand, help you better understand what it is that ultimately we're going to, we're going to be seeking your vote of approval for.
Thank you. M J.
Sorry, just a really quick question. Because again, I'm nervous with regards to the research and studies that are being shown with regards to mental health of our students as well as our staff. In, in this budget, and again, I, I'm just asking because I need just to ask. I know you've been very thoughtful and mindful, once again, because we know the state of things. Is there any additional monies built within either the the grant piece or the Department of Student Support Services that are lending more monies towards support services, whether it be mental health or programming in that sense at this time? I, I, I'm not sure what may have been discussed or asked, either from, you know, Doreen Crowe or, or Mr. Graham Brown. But I, I'm just wondering if, if, if there's anything, if, if that was considered in this 2021, 2022 budget? Or how it may have been approached, I guess you could say? If it was at all.
Yeah, I think part of it in a student support services area, we did add some money to sped related services. But in, in some of the grants, I think one of them, the superintendent had talked about earlier, the safe and supportive schools. And the, the student support services area has been great going in, trying to get other grants that the state has geared toward social, emotional and, and, you know, programs for our families and as well as with our, for the students. So those, those aren't necessarily built into the budget. A lot of the grants that are built in the budget are kind of salary offsets, if you will. But there's other grants out there that student support services every year is able to find and, and to get. So we haven't added anything more other than what I mentioned, a few more funds in student, in sped related services. And some of those grants are available, but we haven't cut any of those programs that were in the F Y 21 budget or the 20 budget. It's kind of, we, we didn't take those out. So there is, there is funding there. I couldn't tell you exactly how much.
I was asking like in a, in a journal.
You didn't take anything out of there that, that would have been there other years.
Thank you, Paul.
Mr. Samaha.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, just given the, the parameters of, of everything that you guys are dealing with in terms of this being a preliminary budget, I, I think you guys just did a really fantastic job with, you know, as I've reviewed it and gone over it, it looks, it looks, you know, really great considering the circumstances that we're in. So I just wanted to acknowledge that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jay. I thought there was more coming. I was waiting. Mr. Raxdale.
Following up on the idea of doing a, a deeper dive in a, a few areas for the next time, when this comes back to us in January, I'd like to request that we look a little more closely into some of the two areas. One, P D, so I'd love to get a slightly deeper dive into the budgeting for professional development. And also the curriculum side, both kind of on the supplies level and on our subscriptions. Everything from, you know, our transition to new social science, history and social science standards. The Elevate Science, you know, the Envision subscriptions or SAVUS or whatever they're, they're calling it now. I would love to see a little bit more detail and do a, a deeper dive on those two areas.
Thanks. We certainly can do that.
Make a note.
Yep. So, no, thank you.
That's great. Thank you, Mr. Raxdale. On that same, kind of a request, as we, we have this money for the strategic plan, I would love to, to think about how we might actually spend that money. And if there are some preliminary ideas, that would be helpful, I think, at that time as well. And then along with Mr. Raxdale's question about curriculum, there's always that textbook that is sort of mentioned, and I would just love to know more about what textbooks, is it actually, is it a textbook? Are we ordering books? Is it really, I'm assuming it's actually online, but I, I think just to clear that up, because sometimes I'll just wonder, is, are we actually ordering these handheld books for the classroom? So I don't need it now, but just as we move forward.
Sure.
And, and so many, and so many Chromebook carts. I feel like every time I look at this, there's more Chromebook carts. So I'll just curious, just don't want that in. Thank you. Any other questions at this moment? Okay. All right. So I think that is it for this. We don't do anything right now. It comes back to us. There's no vote. There's nothing along those lines. Great.
That's right.
Okay. All right. We are, is it okay? I'm going to look at, I'm moving on to item eight. So I think I'm making the decision that we should definitely move the policies to January, if that's okay. We're going to move on to, is that, oh, MJ, are you?
I would, I would.
Are you agreeing?
To table it until our next meeting.
Okay, great. So that brings us to other reports, subcommittee reports. I know that there is at least an equity subcommittee report. I'm not sure if there are others. So I will, we'll start with Jay. Jay, are you going to share your screen? Or no? You're on mute. Yes. Make sure you unmute.
Yes, yes, I'm going to share my screen. It needs to be, it says it's disabled for me right now. There's chance.
Tristan's going to allow you to do it, I think.
On my end, it says that you have the ability to, so give me just one moment.
It's funny, I actually think I, I do have the green below. You don't have that, Jay? The green button?
I have it. I, I have it, but when I click it, oh, there we go. Now it works.
Okay.
Okay. Works now. Okay. So I just thought I would just update the committee on a few of the, I'm sorry, what is the work that's being done by the equity subcommittee? So I just wanted to sort of, sort of ground everybody, the community, anybody, you know, the rest of the committee on the, the two things that are sort of guiding the work, the two sort of, I guess you call them documents. And, and one is the strategic plan, specifically the district strategic objective number three around the culture of inclusion. Where our, the district as a whole is trying to promote an inclusive collaborative school and community culture that embraces diversity, including race, religion, socioeconomic status, ability, gender, sexual orientation, physical, emotional learning needs of all students to provide an equitable educational experience. So that's number one. And then number two is the anti-racism resolution that was passed unanimously by this committee in June and by MASC at the delegate assembly in November. And just to give everyone a reminder of what that says, Wilmington must guarantee that racist practices are eradicated and diversity, equity, inclusion is embedded in practice for our students, families, faculty and staff. We must ensure our own school culture and that of every district in the Commonwealth is anti-racist, that acknowledges that all lives cannot matter until black lives matter. So those are sort of the two things that are sort of guiding what we're doing here in terms of the equity subcommittee. So the two big questions, I think, are, you know, what has been done so far and sort of where we headed. The committee has met three times, September, October and December. We developed the following mission statements. Committee will develop suggestions and recommendations to the school committee on matters related to policy, budget, superintendent evaluation and educational planning that promote a welcoming educational environment for all students. This committee will work to eradicate inequitable practices and advance diversity, equity, inclusion for our students, families, faculty and staff. So some of the discussions that we've had is sort of what, you know, what sort of things are within the purview of the school committee and what's not. One of the big topics that we've been, one of the biggest conversations is around the formation of an equity advisory committee. And this committee would be teachers, administration, families, other stakeholders. And they would basically advise the subcommittee on what actions that might, in regards to whatever is within our purview, to we recommend to the full committee. We also want to just acknowledge as well a shared interest with Wilmington's Equity, Diversity and Inclusion Group in town. In our last meeting, Dr. Brand, we invited Dr. Brand, he came, he had some key insights. And he's going to do a lot to help move the, the committee along. So we were very happy to have him at that meeting. And he's going to be a partner with us clearly moving forward. So I guess where we're headed, we're going to continue to meet. We're communicating with other districts in the state. There's a lot of districts who are moving in the direction that we are of trying to find ways to increase you know, inclusive practices, so that we are going to sort of see what are some other communities in the state doing? What is, I know DESI has their own committee on, on equity and diversity. And so we're going to reach out to them as well as the MASC board for advice and guidance on how to move forward, especially on the formation of the advisory committee. And our hope is to keep the committee, the full committee informed of, of what we're doing throughout the year. So it's sort of in a snapshot, what we've been doing in our subcommittee. I don't know if anybody had any questions about what we're doing or? Yes?
Hi, thanks, Jay. Thank you so much for the work and the thoughtfulness going into the, the mission and the vision going forth. Just a couple of things that just pop in my head. I know it's dangerous this time of night. With regards to the Equity Advisory Committee to this committee, do you think about maybe using the school advisory councils as a barometer for that specifically? And then the principals from, from, because you have teachers, administration and parents sitting on these boards that are speaking to, in each of these buildings, things that they want to put through. And I see it kind of as a, kind of dovetail into an aspect that you, you, you may have discussed. It's something to just throw out there to you as maybe finding it through the, the school advisory councils. And the other thing, just as a reminder, is that there was a creation of the minority. This may not be the correct title, so my apologies, but it's called, I think it's called the Minority Caucus Committee at MASC. It's a, as you know, MASC has a ton of committees, legislative, special education. And this Minority Caucus Committee was created, I'd say, three, four years ago, perhaps. They're looking for members, so I would, I would reach out to the chair through MASC. I think you can find the, the information on the website to see how, you know, about maybe joining and how, what work they're doing themselves. You know, you know, in that. So that might be just, just some couple of things to, to think about and/or pathways to get to where you're hoping to go with it.
Yeah, thank you. Those, that's definitely two, two things that, I'll, I'll follow up definitely with, with the MASC on that. And then with the advisory council, too. I think that's something to, to look into as well, as we're sort of pulling, trying to pull all these things together to sort of move us forward.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions? No. So thank you, Mr. Samaha. David, Jay and I have been working together on this and, and it is, it's exciting work and it's good work. And just another, another shout out to the Wilmington for Equity, Diversity, Inclusion Committee in Wilmington that is working so hard to really move us forward. So I, I think that hopefully we will have an exciting update for you. Maybe not at the next meeting, but hopefully at the end of January about where we hope this, where we hope to go from here. And if you have any other suggestions, I think that's great. You know, the, the school advisory councils, any way we can integrate and work together and collaborate makes so much sense. And sometimes we get sort of in our own bubbles and we, so I think that's a really great suggestion. Thank you for that. All right. If there is nothing else, we have, oh, I'm going to go to correspond. You have, oh, subcommittee, yep.
Well, no, I, I just want to digress. If we were finished with the subcommittees, there's no correspondence this evening, but it can't go, forgive me if you don't mind. I, I do have to, I, I want to congratulate Dr. Jen Bryson on of this past week and earning her doctorate. And it's, it just, you know, for somebody who is so passionate as an educator and if I'm, you know, teaching teachers of tomorrow, it's, it's just so vital for the, the districts, you know, of tomorrow and, and staffing. And I, I am just so beyond proud to call her my colleague, but I do have to say that she argued successfully topic called leveraging family literacy practices to bridge the gap between home to school, which I think is just so ideal in the current climate, although I didn't read the argument, but at the destination, I'm sure it's very well written and very well, it was very well defended. But I just, just so very proud of your hard work in working, sitting on and chairing this board through some difficult times in education and working so collaboratively on these subcommittees. And I, I'm just so impressed and in awe of all this. And then your doctorate on top of it all. And I just, I just can't congratulate you enough. And like, you know how proud I know I am and I'm not to speak for the board, but I know that we all are so elated by your success.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much. That is so, so nice. You're going to make me, you're going to make me cry. Thank you. I'm happy to send you the hundreds of pages if you would like to read through.
Tuition payment, I'm good.
I'll send you, I'll send you the abstract. No, but thank you all. And thanks for your continued support and, and your asking questions about it and just your joy in, in the success of yesterday. It was, certainly feels like I ran a marathon. I'm not a marathon runner, so to all those marathon runners, I think this is like my version of, of running a marathon. So very happy to, to pass the finish line and thank you all for your support and your kind words. It's so, so, so nice and thoughtful. Thank you. Okay, so that brings us to, so there is no correspondence, is that correct? So our futures committee dates, we have our regular session on the 13th and then we have the budget presentation. And it really will, Dr. Brand, just be a budget presentation, is that correct, on the 20th? Do I have your word? He's laughing. Mr. Raxdale and I will make sure it's just a budget presentation.
Is that the hearing, the budget hearing?
It, it is not.
Okay.
No, so we'll do our very best to pack the, the January 13th.
Okay.
Budget hearing is February 10th.
Thank you.
And then January 25th is, so mark your calendars, is the town manager budget, budget presentation. We usually do attend. And I think that is it, unless there are other announcements before we head off to, is it snowing yet? No, I don't know.
Just one wish, everybody, happy holidays and a healthy and safe new year.
Absolutely. Thank you all for your hard work. And I guess that's it. We need a motion to adjourn though.
So moved.
Mrs. Byrne, second. Mr. Samaha, thank you all. Oh, wait, all in favor? That is everyone. Unanimous. All right. Good night, everybody. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you. Good night.